Madam Mayor, Counsel, let's look to the Lord. Father, again, you're just so wonderful and you created this day for us. And we're going to continue to rejoice and be glad in it. And Father, I ask you to help and to guide and direct this council and use them as they conduct the business of affairs of this great city called Shreveport. Continue to bless our mayor and all of the staff that work city government to help our city to stand as one of the great cities of our great country. God, everything we do is for your glory and remind us that we are better together. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
(Inaudible)
So you place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and that shall be one.
Thank you very much. May we see you. Wow, what a lovely group we have today. Very good looking audience. We're gonna get some...
You know, great to hear those young voices in the Pledge of Allegiance. We're glad to hear that today.
And that compliment was coming from Lieutenant Colonel Oliver Jenkins. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You may call Rose.
Mr. Bradford?
Present.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Corbin?
Present.
Mr. Flurry?
Present.
Ms. Litch?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just told that apparently the meeting is not being broadcast. There is some glitch with the equipment. I don't know if it was on our end or their end. So I might get phone calls or texts.
This is trying to tune in and ain't no tuning in, huh? All right, well nevertheless, we move forward with the meeting. We always, essentially engage us via television or streaming. Live streaming through their internet system. Hopefully get that back up and going. Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of our previous meetings. Move by Councilman Corbin and second by Councilman Jenkins that we will adopt the minutes of our administrative conference of July 25th and our city council meeting of July 26th. Are there any questions regarding those minutes? Seeing none, you may vote. Motion passes sixty, zero, and one out of the chamber. Okay, we're down to the good part. At least the start of the good part. And that is that we're going to recognize our distinguished guests, communication from council members, all words from council members. I'm going to start with Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to recognize Coach Rodney Horton and the Shreveport Dixie All-Stars. If you would make your way up to the podium, I'd appreciate it.
Here we go. Of course.
These young men have completed quite an accomplishment this year. And after we hear, after we hear from the coach, I know parents are going to want to take a picture. And Mayor Tyler and I'll come down to the front. And the parents, if you want to come up back here to get a picture, you can certainly do that. Feel free to do that.
All right, thank you for having us come today. I'd like to introduce everyone. This is Coach Byrd, Brad Byrd, here. And we had two of the other dads that couldn't get off work today. But what you have in front of you are twelve, or there's actually ten young men today. Only ten could make it. But we actually had twelve little boys playing in the Shreveport Dixie T-Ball program out off Baird Road. We were originally two teams. These were the twelve best boys that we thought, from our two different teams, came together as one unit. And we played in a district tournament in Ruston, Louisiana with these boys. We went undefeated, won eight-no. We qualified for the state tournament in Vil Platte. So we went to Vil Platte with these boys. We qualified for the World Series. Then we went up to Cersei, Arkansas about two weeks ago. And these group of young men here were the World Series Champions in Cersei, Arkansas. I'd like to introduce everybody and just kind of, we have Dash Walker. Dash, you want to wave to him? There you go, Dash. All right, we got Dash Walker. Got, we got here, got Hudson Toothman right here. There's Huddy. Okay, we got Ryan Rogers. Here's Ryan. And we got here, we got Grayson Powell. Here's Grayson. We got Dawson Smith. Who we got here? We got John Robert Waddell. Then we got Mason Gorley. We got Jackson Davis. We got Chase Horton. We got Brayden Byrd down here on the end. So those are our team. (Applause) The young men that we're missing are Cooper Warren and Hendricks, Hester. And Hendricks Hester, his older brother, the seven and eight boys that step up from these, they also won the World Series in Lowell, Mississippi last week. So, yeah, two groups of boys that won the Dixie World Series representing the city of Shreveport. So, thank you very much for having us and we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Hold one second. The councilman will want to come down and greet you.
All right.
And now are these, these young men are, what, five and six years?
They are five and six. They are. They were, when everybody thinks about T-Ball, they traditionally think about just getting out there. And this is way more than just T-Ball. These little boys play baseball and I mean, it's a lot more than what you think about when you just traditionally think T-Ball. So they work very hard and they represent the city of Shreveport and very well. So they're world champions. That's fantastic. All right, boys, y'all go forward.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, guys. Yes, ma'am. All right.
Should we stand up behind him?
Yeah, let's stand up behind him.
World Series Champions. There, Councilman, may I say? Thank you, Councilman Corbin. Now, have Councilman Jenkins on the board?
Yes. I'd like to recognize Rob Broussard. He's got just a quick notice for us about an event this evening.
Mr. Broussard, come forward, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Rob Broussard, 451 Santa Fe, Shreveport, Louisiana. Mayor, council members, tonight, the Broadmore Neighborhood Association will host the congressional forum. One of your own will be participating, Mr. Jenkins. And that will start at, we're going to have the pledge and stuff around 5:55. And the candidates will state their opening remarks at 6:00. It'll go from 6:00 to 8:00. We have some really good questions and I know that our candidates are going to do well on that. This is a congressional election and we would like to invite y'all to all come and participate. And we look forward to hosting y'all, Mr. Jenkins. So welcome to the Broadmore Neighborhood Forum tonight. Also, I gave, I put on each one of your desks this, a little thing about what's going on in Broadmore with our tutoring, one of our tutoring programs at Yuri Drive. I know the mayor is going to be very interested in these results. We also had tutoring programs at A.C. Steer and Arthur Circle that were phenomenal. And we showed a lot of tremendous growth. And we look forward to next year working with, maybe inviting the city to get involved with us in some of this program because it truly does take a village to raise a child. And when people talk about the village, it's all of us. And so please, if you want more information about our Broadmore Neighborhood Association tutoring programs, please call me. And Mayor, just as a side note, I thought I was at a school board meeting with all these kids. Doesn't it feel great to be back?
Absolutely.
Anyway, thank all of you and thank you, young people, for coming and all of you parents for coming with your young people. Thank y'all and we'll see you tonight.
And if you could just send me those questions anytime, I'll be...
(Laughter) There have been people asked for it.
All right, thank you.
That's pretty good, Councilman.
Try, try, right?
Kind of keep some levity.
Why else, what do you, you're invited over here, huh?
That's it.
Councilman Ever.
Thank you so much, Chairman. I just wanted to briefly remind everybody, you know, with the Olympics going on, we are always, an exciting time to come together as a nation and cheer on our Olympic athletes. And don't forget this year to cheer on our Shreveport-owned, District B's own Kendrick Ferris, who will be competing in the weightlifting. Kendrick is a, really a, somebody to be very proud of. You know, he's set so many records and just as a Shreveport native, he always gives back to his community, well-known and liked in the area. So if you're not familiar with him, you should become familiar with him. He's really a local, a local celebrity that we should be very proud of with all he's accomplished. He will be competing in the, for the Olympic gold on Saturday. So watch out for your schedules and root on our own hometown boy.
Fantastic. Thank you for that observation. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to introduce my guest today. Earlier this summer, Senator Dr. Smith, the President and CEO of the Shreveport Federal Credit Union, established a entrepreneur program called Co-op Biz for Kids. And throughout the summer, she have somewhat established them to be young entrepreneurs. They are actually entrepreneurs. And I invited them here today. If you was, if you came in, you probably saw their displays out in the foyer. You can visit those through after we, after, you know, we leave them on, when I hold them here. But at this time, I would like for Mr. Smith to come forward and give us just an overview of what this is about and the success of it. Good to see you.
It's always a pleasure to come before this wonderful council and leadership of our great city. I'm Helen Godfrey Smith. I'm the President and CEO of the Shreveport Federal Credit Union. And it is my pleasure today to be accompanied by some young people who are indigenous to our community, who are rising stars. So I'm going to ask you all to come and join me. We had an example of the young guys before. And it's turned. And I'll take just a moment. This is my little shadow. I have to watch my CEO seat because she's on her way.
Good job.
But I'd first like to thank Councilman Willie Bradford for inviting us to come and to the entire council for receiving us. I will share with you that some years ago, the Shreveport Federal Credit Union and the city of Shreveport embarked upon a public private partnership. And it is evident in Councilman Jerry Bowman's district, right in the midst of Duela Avenue, the Financial Empowerment Center. And one of the things that we've worked diligently in that center is to build and empower small and emerging businesses in our city. And we've done a great job of that, I think, with our adult entrepreneurs. But there was a vision that would not be denied in my heart to start to seeing this entrepreneurial germ develop in young people that are younger, I mean, young entrepreneurs. So this summer, we kicked off with the help of two business consultants, Ms. Von Jennings and Ms. Roxanne Johnson assisted and supported this work, the Co-op Biz for Kids. Why do we call it Co-op? Because credit unions are cooperatives. And it is our opportunity to help to introduce young people to the business model of being a co-op. The businesses for the young people are to benefit young people between the ages of, I think nine probably would be the youngest and sixteen is the oldest. These children will be able to be a part of our mobile market for junior entrepreneurs. The market moves throughout the city. Today, it is set up in, out in front of the council chambers. And each of their stands are out there displaying their business signs to show what their business ideas are. The little entrepreneur will be able, one of the things that we do is teach them the full continuum of business. This is not a stand, a lemonade stand, or one-day situation. This is an ongoing concern. These businesses will be registered with the state of Louisiana. That's the process that we're in now. And not only that, but they will have access to attorneys and we are making it known that we're going to ask some local attorneys to volunteer their time to help these businesses understand the legal side of running a business. And they will also have access to accountants. So they will be paying taxes. They are going to, what we hope to happen is that they will soon hire help. So they might even have some other young people that they will be giving jobs to. These young people are going to know how to run a successful business. And they are not going to just run this business for the next month or the next six months. This is for a lifetime. This is, these are their dreams that they wanted to bring forward. We have helped them to do that and they are so passionate about what they do. And we are so proud to be a part of helping them realize their lifelong dreams. Now, what are the objectives? And I'm going to be very brief, but I want to tell you that these young people, they are, they've learned how through this summer. They've taken classes. We've taught them how to write business plans. And you would be amazed at some of their business plans and their next phase of their business. But I'm going to introduce to you today some of our entrepreneurs. We have some that are not here today because school started in DeSota Parish and Bosses, so they could not leave school. But some are here. Lou Jean Davis has Flosaics. His parent is Alyssa Davis. And it's amazing to me, Mayor, how these parents have just embraced and have become such a part of helping these young people. It really has been a joy to watch. But Flosaics is, he actually does hand-developed picture frames with mosaics. And he can, he custom color. He can do, just, he's just amazing. So Tristan Dodson, and Tristan, if you would raise your hand. Tristan Dodson does music therapy. He is his own, he's, Tristan can tell you better than I can. Come real quick, Tristan. He's sixteen, he can talk.
Hi, my name is Tristan Dodson. I compose and write my own music. I record it myself and I play the piano on all of my music. Thank you.
And he has two CDs. One is for music therapy, which is great for just relaxing and listening to. And then he has a gospel, a single called Better. So that's available out at his stand. Jory George has Jory's Gourmet Popcorn. Jory, raise your hand. This is the entrepreneur, I mean, I'm telling you, she is just natural to it.
I can see it in her face. I can see it.
She's going to be upset with me because I didn't ask her to talk. She's rare. The, we have Crystal Gibson and Destiny. Where are you all? Right there. And Crystal and Destiny mixes their own body magic, which is hand creams and body butters and with shea butter. And parents, LaShawn Gibson, Tonette Gibson. So they are really excited about their product. And then we have Michael Hazelton with Doggy Wonkas. Michael makes and bakes organic dog treats and he ships them. It is awesome. I, I didn't taste them, but the dogs... (Laughter) But they say the dogs love them. Jakaya Hollins, Jakaya with Kaya Pops. I think Jakaya's not here today. She does the cake pops. Corinthian Powell has a, Corinthian has the gift of art and he draws and he has original art framed and available. And he will, you can, you can, he, he will take orders from you if you want something specific for him to do. He specializes in a few things, Florida leaves and different things like that. So Takiana Winslow, where's Takiana? Takiana creates her own jellies. She has, how many flavors, Takiana? Nine flavors of jelly. And that's just fantastic. And I'm trying to get her to come with some hot biscuits, but... And then Jordan Sumo, where is Jordan? Oh, uh-oh, my little, right here. Jordan does, her name is Sumo. Sumo, okay? Her business is Sumo Punch. And her little tagline is, "You're going to want Sumo Punch." (Laughter) She is excellent. Do you want to talk? No, no. And then Kristen Williams, where's Kristen Williams?
He's here.
Kristen Sweettooth. Kristen creates all kinds of creative desserts and it's just amazing what he does with cupcakes and different kinds of desserts. He's a baker. He loves to cook. And then the next one is Caleb Zachary with KZ Snack Shack. I believe today Caleb has gumbo and red beans and rice. And I heard that it was pretty good. But the key to it is Cajun. And he, he does that flavor and he loves to cook and he really loves to eat, so. He's an expert. And last but not least, we have our Pick-a-Pickle Pickles group. Jerel, this little boy here, right here, this is mine, little brother, come on, where the rest of you? Jerel and Jerel. These young men and their granny does Pick-a-Pickle Pickles. So we are excited about what can happen as a result of this program, what has happened in front of our eyes as we've watched these young people bloom and just come alive and get so enthusiastic. They're all going to have a successful year because they are now motivated and they really now understand why they need to understand math, why they need to pay attention to their teachers, because the information that those folk are giving them, they have seen it work in their lives this summer. So thank you for having us. And Mayor, would you and Councilman come down and take a picture with the young entrepreneurs?
Granny, I want to...
Okay.
Good job, everybody. It's a great way to start a meeting with a lot of young people to be proud of. Sure does make you feel good about the future.
I, I had a chance to consume and shop with all of them, actually. Last week at Southern University, they had a display where they actually sold their goods and services. And I had a chance to visit with them. And I just want to say, Councilman and City, these, these young people have been trained and developed in entrepreneurship, business. And I don't want them to have to go to Atlanta or Dallas for their business to survive. We talk about homegrown businesses. We want to be able to help them grow by engaging right now. The product is, is on the market now, is that right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and, and they have bank accounts.
Yes.
And they, and they going to be paying taxes and they going to do everything that entrepreneurs do in this city. So let's, let's, let's get more information. They'll be out there for a few minutes and then they're going to have to leave. But get more information. They have their business cards. And let's, let's try to engage these young people and show them that we support them and that we care, that they do survive and that they have put in the effort and investments. Smith put in the investment to make these young people very business-conscious and we want to continue to support them. Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
We want opportunities to come out into communities and events. Just let us know. We've got flyers out.
All right, thank you. All righty. Are there any more council members who have any communication or recommendations? Seeing none, Mayor Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of the council. Today, we have in the audience some young people who were honored in Washington, DC this summer. And we want to recognize them here today at home and let them know that we are so very proud of them. I do have two resolutions. I'm not going to read those, but I am going to talk a little bit about what each one did when they were in Washington, DC.
Fantastic.
We have William Samuel Davis. And William, will you please stand? Where are you, William? (Applause) I'll call you up in just a minute, okay? I'll call you up to get your proclamation. William is a student at Cattle Mill Magnet who won the Healthy Lunchtime Challenge with his original recipe. It's called S to the Fifth Power, Sam's Southern Savouring Salmon Supreme. That's a long name. He represented the state of Louisiana in 2015 at the White House Kids State Dinner and was at that time chosen to dine beside First Lady Michelle Obama and meet President Obama. He made such an impression that he returned this year to introduce the First Lady at this year's dinner.
Whoa.
I'm going to tell you that we were so very proud that you represented us well up there. We also have in the audience the state of Louisiana's representative for the 2016 White House Kids State Dinner. And he is Owen Ozborn. Where are you, Owen? Will you please stand?
Wow. (Applause)
A little bit about Owen. Owen is a student at Evangel Christian Academy. His dish was the Louisiana-winning recipe named The Sweet Savory Dip Tastic Louisiana Power Lunch. They have these long names. Council members, you have at your places the recipes from both of these young men, who are sons of our city of Shreveport employees. Isn't that wonderful? Owen's father is an engineer at the airport and Sam's father is one of our firemen. And at this time, I'm going to walk down, Mr. Chairman, if you will join me.
Happy to.
As I present the proclamations to both of these young men, William and Owen, will you please come forward to receive your proclamation? If you'll come down and take a photo with us, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Are these billable hours?
Did you get this handout on the, the bond stuff?
I don't think so. But I wasn't here just...
You can stand up there. Individuals...
I was, I was out there.
You can stand up there. And if you stand there, we'll do individuals. So that's...
There you go.
Great job.
Is it extending the term?
Yes.
Same term.
Yes. Great job. (Applause) Great job.
Is it extending the term?
Yes.
Same term.
Great job.[593.84][593.84](applause)
Just two or three others.
Take your time, Mayor.
Okay. We also like to recognize two other citizens who were among 5,000 women selected to attend the first-ever United States of Women Summit in Washington, D.C. First Lady Michelle Obama and Oprah Winfrey joined together to host a nationally broadcast event. I'd like now to recognize these two young ladies by having them stand. Will Ms. Sheridith Rong, a recent intern with the mayor's office, a summer internship program?[646.69][646.69](applause) Thank you, Ms. Rong. And of course, she's the youngest secretary ever on the Shreveport Mayor's Women's Commission. And also, we have Ms. Renee Ellis, who has done wonders to transform Westwood Elementary and make academic gains.[664.04][664.04](applause) I distinctly remember her in 2005 as a hurricane evacuee from New Orleans, and this community has been blessed to have her here. And I wanna say congratulations to both of these young ladies, and thank you for representing the Shreveport, the city of Shreveport very, very well.[684.12][684.12](applause) Thank you all so much for coming today. Okay, last week, our fire department held the swearing-in ceremony for our new Chief of Communications, Ms. Kim Tolliver. Please stand, Ms. Tolliver.[698.51][698.51](applause) Now, what is so unique about this swearing is, is that Ms. Tolliver is the first female African-American Chief of Communications for the city of Shreveport. We look forward to leadership, to the great leadership that she'll bring to our fire department. Thank you, Ms. Tolliver, for all that you do.[720.04][720.04](applause) And last week, I had the pledge of, on last Thursday, along with Councilman Efferson, attending the premiere of Cut to the Chase at the beautiful Strand Theater with Ms. Arlena Akri, Akri Ma, Director of Economic Development and Film. The 90-minute film was locally produced by Blaine Weaver and Mindy Bledsoe, and let me tell you, it was so outstanding. We had hundreds of people to attend there, and we were very proud of our native son for what he had done with that film. Mr. Chairman, the city of Shreveport operates on a policy where SPAR opens cooling centers when temperatures reach three consecutive 100-degree days. In preparation for the excessive temperature, SPAR has prepared cooling centers to open under that policy. The cooling centers offer free bottled water and a designated seating area for general public at each site. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. I just mentioned one of those. And since we met last, the city has supported several events, including Farmers Market and Festival Plaza, Movies and Moon Beans featuring Norm of the North at Corby's Park, Summer Fun runs at Betty Virginia Park, 24th Yazzie Summer Morning Mix with Melba Moore at Riverview Hall, and the list goes on. We have so many outstanding things that are happening for families in our city. And we also have one last announcement, the Mayor's Backpack Program from 6:00 to 9:00 tonight at our Shreveport Convention Center. So, we invite you all to stop by there. We think we have about 3,000-plus people coming by to help with underserved students in our community, those who are unable to have the necessary materials and supplies and tools to have a good back-to-school start. So, please come by if you can this evening at the Shreveport Convention Center. Those are the announcements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those wonderful recognitions, as well as for that communication, as well as the council members. Thank you, Councilman Corbin, for inviting your guests here today. Champions, this is a city of champions, and entrepreneurs. It's been a little time, but I think it was a wonderful time to acknowledge and recognize all these young people today, as well as our new Chief of Communication and my principal, Ms. Ellis from the ranch. I enjoy going there, and good to see you, and thank you for your service. I see you have gotten several recognitions for your leadership out at Westwood. Looking forward for a great year again. Okay, thank you, everybody. Mayor, that's all you have.
That's it, thank you, sir.
And council members, we're good to go.
Absolutely.
All right. We'll move forward. All right, reports from our city departments. We have property standard director here, Mr. Green. Anybody have any questions or inquiries regarding property standards? I see none, Mr. Green. Thank you for coming and thank you for your service. Review Collection and Information Report, we should have received those via electronic means. Council members did not receive those. Mr. Crawford is available too. Thank you that you get those, as well as our City of Bond report. We received those through electronic means also. I see no public hearing on the docket for today. Yes?
On July the 12th, 2016, the city council adopted Resolution Number 139, which stated that a public hearing would be held on August the 9th, 2016, to hear objections to the proposed issuance of $20 million of water and sewer taxable revenue bonds to improve the city's water and sewer infrastructure. Notice of the Public Hearing was published in the Official Journal on July the 5th, 22nd to 29th, and August the 5th. The public hearing was inadvertently omitted from this agenda. This office requests the council to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding the public hearing and Resolution 137, which certifies that a public hearing was held, to the agenda at this point on the agenda, so that if it's added, the public hearing can be held at this point. If the public hearing is added, we request the council to hold the public hearing at this time.
I move that we will suspend the rules to take up the items regarding the public hearing.
Second.
Move by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Corbin, that we will suspend rules at this time to receive a motion and to take up the public hearing. Any discussion? If there are no discussion, you may vote to suspend the rules. Motion passes 6 to 0, two out of the chamber. Okay, at this time, in accordance to the request from the Clerk, I'm gonna ask for the public hearing, then we will adopt the resolution to announce that we did have a public hearing. So, is there any report from the administration regarding this public hearing? No report from the Clerk? I'm sorry?
I didn't know whether the city attorney wanted to make any comments about what this, why it's needed or not. If not, I'd...
We can, because we've already done it.
We good?
Good.
Okay, yeah, unnecessary. All right, is there any, anyone here who would like to speak? Gentlemen, I'm sorry. I was trying to get on the record who was supporting this public hearing. You want to speak on something else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll let you know in a time to speak on your item, okay? Now, is there anyone here who would like to speak on the public hearing? Support or against? The doc, I mean, the item regarding Resolution 137. Okay, seeing none? I declare it, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
For the record, we will state that the public hearing was added to the agenda without objection and then held.
Yes.
Sound good for me.
(laughter)
I thought I, I thought I, okay, we're good. All right, so, now, for the record, I move that we will adopt 137.
Adopt Resolution 155.
Wait a minute, which one is?
It's 155. Resolution 139 was adopted by the council earlier, and it said that we would hold a public hearing at this time. Resolution 155 states that the public hearing was held, and there was no petition received by any group of people who objected to the city issuing these bonds.
Okay, right. I move that we will adopt Resolution 155, announcing that public hearing was held and that no one spoke in opposition of this legislation. Second. Move by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Efferson. Any discussion from council members? Please vote. Okay, motion passes 6 to 0, one out of the chamber. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Getting us back on track. Okay, Mr. Clerk, you may continue with adding agenda...
There are no items to be added to the agenda at this time. We are now under public comments for items that are on the agenda.
I have no public comments for item on the agenda, so you may continue.
We have no confirmations and appointments to be taken up at this time, so we under consent agenda legislation. There are three items that can be adopted. Resolution 149 concerning water and sewer connection to the Water and Sewer Department apparatus. Resolution 150 and 151 are suspensions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the code.
To adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Move by Councilman Efferson, seconded by Councilman Corbin, that the consent agenda would be adopted. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 6 to 0, one out of the chamber.
Chairman, we're now under regular agenda legislation. The first item is Resolution 148. It suspends the effects of Chapter 106 of the code relative to 2901 Marham Street. You might recall that this was an item that was attempted to be added to the agenda at the last meeting.
Yes.
There is not sufficient parking under the code, under the present code, but there will be sufficient parking under the new code if it's adopted, and this would allow the business to operate with the sale of alcohol while the matter goes through the ZBA, and if the ZBA approves it, it could stay open. If not, it would have to close.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Move by Councilman, move by Councilman Efferson, and seconded by Councilman Bowman, for this adoption of this Resolution 148. Any discussion from the council members? I see no discussion, let's vote, please.
Mr. Efferson?
Motion passes 6 to 0, one absent today. You may continue.
Resolution 152 declares the intention of the city of Shreveport to issue water and sewer revenue bonds, one or more series in an amount not to exceed $120 million for the purpose of, number one, paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal system of the city, including equipment and fixtures of said city therewith. Number two, paying a termination fee relating to an interest rate swap that was entered into by the city in connection with certain LCDA revenue bonds, Series 2005, employing professionals and providing for other matters in connection...
Move by Councilman Florrie, and seconded by Councilman Efferson for this adoption. Any discussion? I know we visited with administration regarding this, so we should... If you have any additional questions, they'd be happy to address them. If there are none, we let us vote. Motion passes 6 to 0, one out of the chamber. You may continue.
Resolution 153 gives preliminary approval to the issuance of not exceeding $25 million of refunding bonds of the city.
Second. Move by Councilman Efferson, seconded by Councilman Florrie for the adoption of 153. Again, this is one of the items that we visited with administration on. Any discussion? I see none. Let's vote, please. Motion passes 6 to 0. Thank you, you may continue.
Chairman, we're now in introduction of resolutions. There's one resolution to be introduced. It's 154, employing professionals with respect to the issuance by the city of not exceeding $25 million of refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the city's obligations in a long agreement relating to the issuance of LCDA revenue refunding bonds.
Understood.
Not exceeding $120 million.
Move by Councilman Florrie?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Corbin for the adoption, I mean, the introduction of 154. Again, another item that we visited with administration on. I'm sure everybody's clear. If there are any discussions or questions, you may ask them now. I see none, you may vote. Motion passes 6 to 0. You may continue, sir.
Chairman, we're now in introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to August the 23rd. Ordinance 76 amends the 2016 budget for the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance number 77 amends the 2016 budget for the General Fund. Ordinance 78 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 79 amends the 2016 Airport Enterprise Fund budget. And ordinance number 80 levies a tax of 19 mils per dollar on all property subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport for the year 2016 for the purpose of paying principal and interest on the outstanding general obligation bonds of the city.
Please make an action.
Second.
Move by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Bowman, for the introduction of these ordinances. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 6 to 0, one out of the chamber. I'm absent.
Mr. Chairman, we're now in ordinances on second reading and final passage, and this ordinance 71 closes and abandons portions of Ponserosa Trail and Sugar Leaf Trail in the Lindbergh subdivision, units 5 and 5A in Section 35.
Second. Move by Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Bowman, for the adoption of ordinance 71. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. Motion passes 6 to 0.
Ordinance 73 is a zoning matter, case number C-54-16. It rezones property located on the east side of Wallace Lake Road, 180 feet south of Dalton Street, from B2A to B2 Business Neighborhood District.
Move by Councilman Florrie, seconded by the Chair, for the adoption. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Mr. Efferson? Mr. Jenkins?
Motion passes 6 to 0.
Ordinance 74 is a zoning matter, case number C-55-16. It rezones property located on the northeast corner of Industrial Loop in St. James, 293 feet west of...
Move by Councilman Florrie, seconded by the Chair, for the adoption of ordinance 74. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 6 to 0.
Ordinance number 75 is a zoning matter, case number C-58-16. It rezones property located on the south side of Southfield Road, 750 feet east of Erie Drive, from B1 to R1D. Urban One Family Residence.
Second. Move by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Bowman, for the adoption of 75. Are there any discussion? Let's vote. Motion passes 6 to 0, one out of the chamber.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda. I'm not aware of any matter that's on the table, agenda that is to be removed. All of the appeals that were to be heard this time were heard yesterday, and if so, we under reports from officers, boards, and committees.
All right, wow, we fast. The mayor said, the mayor said she had to be somewhere at 6:00. Mayor, we're gonna get you there early.
Thank you. They're already gathering. I just got the message.[1735.43][1735.43](laughter)
They already gathering?
They're already over there gathering, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, good. Any reports from officers, board, or committees, council members? I know we have a Public Safety Committee meeting set.
End of the month.
End of the month.
What's the date on that?
The Tuesday.
And don't forget the intergovernmental meeting on Friday. I need the chamber, I mean, the chambers task force committee to meet at 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock, at the Skybox.
Yes, we'll try to have one of the rooms for that meeting.
I got some inquiries and some response follow-up from commissioner members, and I think it's gonna be a really, really enlightening meeting, so all the council members, Mayor, we trust you'll be able to make it.
Yes, sir.
And let's go in and let's try to get some business done collectively through our government bodies, okay? Any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none? Clark?
Mr. Chairman, as we discussed yesterday, we have BAC 4816 at the next meeting. It's a hearing concerning whether or not chicken should be allowed in a neighborhood. We received from, and I believe we sent out some information to that today.
Yes, yes.
We, the mayor has appointed an assistant city attorney, Darren Stran. It will be on the agenda for confirmation at the next meeting. Mr. Chairman, and I'm required to read the following notice concerning a public meeting. It concerns the ordinance that was introduced today, 19 mils per dollar tax levy announcement, regular meeting of the city council on August the 9th. Mr. Chairman, Louisiana revised statute 4211 at sequence requires the city council to give public written notice no less than 24 hours before the meeting of this taxing authority. Written notice has already been posted on the agenda, published in the official journal, and advertised on the city's website. The public is hereby notified that the city council of the city of Shreveport intends to adopt an ordinance to levy the tax of 19 mils per dollar against service obligations at its regular meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, August the 23rd, 2016, beginning at 3:00 p.m. in the Government Chambers and Government Plaza, 505 Travis Street. Said ordinance will also be discussed at its administrative conference on Monday, August the 22nd, 2016. No action will be taken at that time. The ordinance is as follows. An ordinance levying a tax of 19 mils per dollar on all property subject to ad valorem taxation within the city of Shreveport for the year 2016 for the purpose of paying principal and interest of the outstanding general obligation bonds of the city of Shreveport and otherwise providing with respect thereto. That's the end of the announcement. And I have one other thing, Mr. Chairman. You've called a special meeting immediately at 4:30 or immediately after this meeting, whichever occurs first. So at 4:30, I guess.
We have to go back to some old business to discuss until 4:30.
Just, just me?
That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for those observation and as well as those announcements. I'm gonna ask the council members to, we got some information regarding the Special Step and Use 4816. I'm asked that you review that closely. And at our work session on the 22nd, that we could discuss it intelligently. I somewhat perused it and see some conflicting situations with that. And I want us to intelligently discuss that on the work session. And we'll be looking forward to the confirmation of Ms. Stran, the assistant city attorney. I'm asked the council members to stick around for a consecutive meeting after this meeting so we can at least try to clear up some situations that we need to clear up as soon as possible. It has been duly read by the clerk, our intentions regarding the tax. Okay, additional communications from the mayor?
None, thank you, sir.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you for recognizing those young people as well as the overall recognitions that we had today. I thought it was very good to see that. Do we ever get back online? Are we on TV yet?
I think so.
Okay. And congratulations again, Ms. Oliver, for your distinguished promotion. Chief Wilbourn, thank you for such a wonderful selection to lead that department. Communication's very valuable to us. We want to thank her for that opportunity. Any council members have any communication, additional communication? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move forward with public comments. Please state your name and to all of our guests who will be speaking, state your name, your address, and you each will have three minutes to make your commentary.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport 71101. I'd like to say, first of all, thanks to the help that I got for the MDA. I gave $160 for this year, which I was very happy to do and look forward to helping them again next year. I got to get a picture taken, Willie, thanks to you. I got to get a picture with the All-Stars out in the lobby earlier. I really appreciated that very much.
Are you a sports fan?
I am.
Okay.
I watch sports. I've been even watching the Olympics.
You always tell us that you watch Lucy. I didn't know you watched.
Don't worry, I'll get to that. Anyway, I'll make it quick. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed the.
All the churches you visit in the day.
Well, the thing is.
And all the choirs that you sing in, and all the TV shows that you tell us about having watched. I sometimes wonder when you sleep, Sammy. I mean, you fit a lot into a day.
Won't be caring growing a field of rabbits, keep yours up. Anyway, the thing is that I did happen to enjoy the food that they served out there earlier. I got to try the thimble punch. I enjoyed that and the gumbo and the popcorn. It was absolutely super. They're doing a great job. Now, for the fun part. I was watching Lucy this morning on the MTV 214, and she got so stupid with an Italian man on a date that she accidentally dumped some food on his tuxedo. And she tried to get it cleaned at the cleaners, but they were closed. And she couldn't even remember the last name of the cleaner. So Mr. Mooney told her to remember the name if she could. She couldn't. So Vivian came down there to try to help with the binoculars and see if they could find out what the last name was to the man. No, that didn't happen either. So Lucy went so stupid, she tried to get a hole in the roof, thought she could lower herself with rope, and it might take her down there to call the man to the cleaners to come take the stain out of the tuxedo. What she did was so stupid was when the rope broke, she landed in green dye. And then when they finally got in there, Mr. Mooney, Vivian, and this other person got her out of it. But then when she was out of it, Vivian said, "You'll be now ready for a St. Patrick's Day dance." And all she did was cry while I jumped up and down laughing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mears, and thank you for your work with MDA every year. We appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Give us your name and your address, Mr. Page.
My name is Leroy Page, P-A-I-G. And I live at 1620 Fullerton Street, apartment 106. That's 71107.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you, fellows, for getting the opportunity. I found out 30 minutes before your.
The meeting?
Meeting.
Okay.
By the policeman.
Okay.
I've been going through a nightmare for the last five months. I've been constantly on the phone, and Ms. Murray in your office, she's the name. I'm the fellow who bought a van, and God knows, I'm a disabled veteran, Vietnam veteran. And I need, I like the van because I go to military stand down and stuff. You know how it's old. I just turned 71 the 30th of July. Well, I paid the lady. The van was from Fort Worth. They said, just heard, they told me that they had just purchased it at an auction for children. But anyway, she wanted to get rid of it, but her daddy was the one that was driving it and parking it down there on Marcus Street where I frequent. And I gave them $1,500. Had the brakes put on it, the shocks put on it, the motor tuned up, because I'm one of them. And just to find that the police pulled me over and said, "Sir, I think that van is stolen." Well, I don't want to steal a van. And they know I didn't steal it, I had a better sale. They left me standing in the rain. And today, the lady that stole the van was sentenced this morning. Attorney Williams called me. She got one year probation and to pay me $1,500 restitution, which would be about $100 some dollars a month. I need that like I need a hole in my head. Now, the van, attorney, District Attorney Williams and the District Attorney of Fort Worth, they was working together, and they was able to get the person that the van was stolen from and me together. And he said, "Look, we both, you've taken loss, I've taken loss. I'd like to see you happy." So I gave him $700 for the van. Now I rushed back to Shreveport, right back to the police station. And they've been very helpful. But it turns out, I've got to have that title.
Mr. Chairman?
Is there any objections to Mr. Page continuing?
Sir, you've got to hear this, please. I hope you all.
I see no objections. Continue.
But I had to turn, get the register, get this vehicle registered, insurance, license plate, everything. And then, now I just want my van. I go down there to the police, and here I got tags for it. I go down to the police property room for them to release it. Then I gotta go almost to the central storage, where they want $2,300 for towing and storage fees. I mean, I was like I was dealing with a bunch of loan sharks. And they got it down to $700. I gave the people $700, laid it down there, just money, 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 tags, everything. Walks out, because you can't see the vehicle until you pay. Walk out there, this vehicle, they had lost the keys to it. The windows were rolled down, totally destroyed the inside to the van. And I said, "Well, we're worrying about the keys." I said, "Well, if you all don't have the keys, how did you move it here, right here?" She said, "Well, we do that by forklift." Can you imagine your car being lifted by forklift? This is ridiculous. And I walked around the front, and sure enough, in the bumper, you can see where the forklift blades doesn't run in there and put a big hole in it. This van has been totally destroyed. I would like for it to be released to me. Now here's, first, the police, working with me, explained to me that they would, they have been doing all they can. But I've been trying to get in touch, George, bring this to your attention there. And I'm sure Ms. Williams, because she said this today. But nobody is interested in helping this 71-year-old disabled veteran. The woman that stole it brought it across state line, got one year suspended sentence. And me, now, I got, I can't even get the vehicle that's legally mine now, and now they bring it down and shift it to you people at city council. You all made the law. You all entered into a contract with this tow. Please, release that van. I will pay the $225 to get a key made. Give me my van. I've been to enough.
Can the administration come in on this? Are you familiar with this?
This is the first we've heard about it. From my officer.
Yeah, and from my officer, too.
Mr. Page, I'm gonna ask that.
Let me just ask the police chief if they can come over there.
Working on this every day in the police department. Thank you, I'm gonna sit down.
No, no, we want to help and address this.
I wish, well, to please.
Very serious about.
First time hear about it.
If we're contracting with an agency and they're not.
Sir, what they're doing and the way they're treating the people over there, the city of Shreveport.
We are looking to how our contract reads regarding us outsourcing this particular service, because once they assume that, my expectation is that they will, it's in their care, under their supervision, it should be treated right. Now, I'm gonna hear from the city attorney, but we want to bring justice to your situation. Hold on a second. You may have a seat right now.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll get his information. I'll get with our prosecutor as well as the DA who was prosecuting this matter, make sure that all the matters related to the van are complete, and then I'll get with SPD, and we'll see what the actual circumstances are of the holding of his van. And I will be in contact with him and get him an answer regarding whether or not it can be released and under what conditions it can be released.
Sir, your Shreveport Police Department, and we'll tell you, and they don't like what's happened to the people in this city no more than anybody else.
But let's address the situation as it is, Mr. Page, and the city attorney is gonna get information from you. But I also want, Mayor, if you please, I want to know what the contract, how's the contract fashioned when these type of services assume a possession from a citizen in the care of that property?
You know, I need to get with staff. I've not heard this before. I've not heard anything about this company. So, you know, I'm at a loss here. But let me tell you, we serve citizens every day. We care, and when it's brought to our attention, we take care of it. And I'm pretty sure that the police department may have more information.
I'm sure.
But let us work on that, and I will get with him and see what we can do legally to resolve his situation. We'll do everything. We always do.
I know, but I'm talking more general in the fact that is this a standard that they would tour a car in, use a forklift to move it, and not care for it? The windows down, the weather's getting to it? No, I want to know the contract with that agency to ensure that if they're violating this man, then they are liable for whatever damages that have happened to this man.
Let us find out the details.
Okay, right. That's on action. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Albert Brown? Is that Mr. Brown? I'm sorry? Oh, you know, we forget about you, Mr. Brown.
Albert Brown, 551 East, 82nd Street. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Councilman, I, first of all, I want to thank you all, for you did keep your word. Two weeks you got that stop sign up. But we need two more. I'm talking on behalf of the people of City Grove. We need 83rd Thornhill and 73rd Thornhill and a four-way stop sign on 79th. Because it is breaking the speed, but we still need a couple of more because of the fact that when you get to 81st, you can go a little bit faster. You need to break that speed. And so that's why I'm back again asking, like I said, 73rd Thornhill, 83rd Thornhill. And they asking me for a four-way stop sign on 79th. And we did get them to put a no parking sign up there on 79th, you know. So it is break the speed, and I want to thank you all so much. Thank you all so much. And we're gonna be doing a dedication to the, that 108th in Mark's.
Can the administration evaluate that situation?
We can, we'd be glad to. Mr. Chairman, I'll just add to that, that there has been two traffic studies in this area, and these requests have almost been two years now coming in for the same thing. And the reason that we have the two stop signs in place that are there is because that's what was recommended by a traffic engineer.
I see.
And traffic counts were done for the four, for a potential four-way stop and additional stop signs. And the recommendation from traffic engineering and administration is just what we have in place now. That anything else would create more issues and more traffic flow problems. So at this point, I'm not sure that there's a reason to go. So at this point, I'm not sure that there's a reason to go back out and re-study.
Well, sir, if you go down in other neighborhoods, I've, I've read.
Mr. Brown, let me just say this. The councilman just gave us some information. Now, I just wanna say that we get inquiries from citizens about policy and things all the time. We can only be directed by the professionals who does that. Traffic engineers has evaluated it and they have suggested and recommended a certain traffic remedy. And, and, uh, and we can't circumvent that recommendation unless there's something that you could present that will give us that. What I'm asking you to do, if you don't mind, I want you to speak to your councilperson.
Yes, I will speak.
And, and, and.
Because the people, I'm speaking on behalf of them.
I understand.
I'm sorry.
Now, but speak to your councilperson. And let him know, show him where you think the issue that you just presented are relevant to a re-study. And if he's convinced that, that a re-study is warranted, then he'll bring it to the administration. Okay? That's where we try to have a system.
Yeah, I understand, I understand the policy.
I mean, just because you come down and say, "We need this." I have people in my district telling me I need cameras on every corner, but we can't put cameras on every corner.
No, I understand.
But I'm just saying, so we appreciate your input, but we have to evaluate it through our, the private departments and to see scientifically what it is that would, that would create a better environment for those situations or those intersections or those neighborhoods or those situations in the city. So I'm just asking you to speak to your councilman.
But I do want to tell you that you need to come talk to me real quick.
He don't mind talking to you. He's open, he's open to talk.
I'll be glad to talk to you at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you for coming down. Yeah, we just, we just appreciate you. But, you know, we have a system, a method.
Yeah, I understand. But come talk to me real quick.
Okay, he'll talk to you.
Real quick.
Thank you. All right. All right, uh.
Can we in your district?
Alicia Strugans.
Alicia Strugans, ninety-three fourteen Sanderwood Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-eighteen. Again, I told you I'm gonna be here every time I'm off work to come and say what I have to say. I'm a member of the Shreveport Fire Department. I have a list of forty-two city workers that's having issues. I can only get a fourth of those people to come forward because the rest of them are afraid that they'll be retaliated against or if anything fired from their job if they come forward. The man that just walked out about his vehicle spoke, that he spoke with the mayor's office. This seemed like an ongoing thing that the mayor has no idea of what's going on when we call her office. That was the same thing that was said about my situation when I know it was untrue because I sent a certified letter addressed only to her. It's illegal to open mail if it's not addressed to you. So I'm not understanding how, how you able to say, "I have no idea, I have no idea." There should be some repercussions for the people that are doing, not doing their job. I'm not gonna say they doing their job, because if you getting it, you covering up unless that's what you told to do. But that shouldn't be right. It's like everything that goes on that's gonna bring discredit to you or the city, you don't wanna deal with it. I mean, it's, good things go on in the city, but it's bad things too. And we want the bad things to be fixed, again, so that the city can be good. I remember Bowman spoke the last time and said, "You speaking negative on your city." It's negative in the city. We trying to get it to be positive. And I'm not understanding, for as the mayor, I know back in your days, your years, you had issues. I'm not sure if you went to the police before you did what you did and asked for help and it brought you to killing. I'm asking for help. We all asking for help. We don't wanna be pushed to the point that we do something that, that's irreversible. I'm not gonna give up. I am not gonna give up. Like I said, if I have to be here every meeting I will, if I have to drive all my days off the city in Baton Rouge to sit in the EEOC office for the eight hours that they at work and I speak to somebody every day there until something happens here, it's ridiculous. I filed a complaint from HR, that they had a complaint from me December twenty-second. Up until this day, last week I got a letter in the mail telling me that they didn't find anything, saying, "I said this, I said that." The conversation was recorded. She says she don't have the recording. How convenient, y'all lost two recordings. But my, every call I make is recorded, so I have those. They don't get back with me. I have the city attorney calling me. I wrote to the mayor's office, why are they not answering what I said? And then the city attorney didn't get back with me. He had the HR to send me something. I wasn't good with it, so I called back to him. "What, what's going on? This stuff needs to be resolved." I can't speak to everybody because I don't know everyone's situation, but majority of them call me. I got a letter in the mail, I don't know who it was from, from policies that was violated. I'll be turning that into our fire chief because I don't know who sent it to me.
Let me show you, your time has expired. Thank you.
Do I have to give you the beep, Ted?
I'm thinking, hold on a second. I'm, I'm, my response to you is that, again, you put us in a precarious position in that you are a city employee. And whereas we are responsible policy development of this city. And we are not, I mean, we hear, we hear you. But I guess we, I guess we need to hear more. We need something that, that would create a scenario where this body would need to introduce legislation that will, that will somehow could be a remedy. But I, at this point, we, we can't, as a city council, circumvent, like I told a gentleman, protocol.
So what are you needing?
I'm asking you, I'm asking, I'm asking the mayor, I'm just asking you, requesting that if there's any way that your issue could be resolved. Because I think there's a, again, there's a, there's a, there's several, I thought, recourse that you could take.
I've done them all.
Civil service. But again, I'm saying, if you went through all the, all the, all the levels of recourse and you still haven't gotten satisfaction.
Some stuff can't go to civil service. And if everything's, some stuff, that's a problem, it doesn't, it doesn't deem for me to go to civil service. And if I go through the proper recourse and everything's tainted, then what, I mean?
Well, see, you're making accusations that I can't support. But all I'm saying is that, is that as a, as the policymaking entity of the city, the administration of city employees is the privilege of the mayor and her administration. For us to make any comments or try to address what you're saying or even circumvent that will, will create us being out of order. And I'm just saying that, that there has to be some other recourse. I wanna speak with the mayor and the city attorney, but, but we, we have to have a policy-changing scenario.
So the mayor has nothing to say?
I'm not asking the mayor to say anything.
I'm asking.
No, I'm saying, I'm not asking the mayor to say anything. I wanna speak to the mayor. This is a council meeting, not the mayor's meeting. And I'm saying that, that I'm not asking her to respond at this point. But I'm saying that, that I want, I want some resolve. If you got issues, if others got issues in the city, and it takes some type of legislation to create some type of a better response or a better resolution, then we have to look at that. But at this point, we can't intervene. There's nothing that I can do except for request that the mayor meet and we talk about that. And at the proper time, we can bring something before the city council that may offer something. But at this time, we, we, we not in a authoritative position to, to deal with and address city employees' issues at this time.
I'm asking you now, you're saying you need, what do you need?
I'm gonna talk.
I have a petition.
I wanna talk to.
Do you need that?
That's not what I need. I need to speak with the city attorney and the mayor and, and see how they see this, this, this incident or these.
But what about the other side is what I'm asking. It's gonna be one-sided. So if they tell you they have no idea about this, this and this, where we going?
Councilmember. We don't make these kind of decisions. It's just not what we do as a city council board. I mean, you're asking about personnel matters. I mean, is that, is that correct?
You want us to intervene in a personnel matter? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's just not under our authority. So, I mean, I guess I'm just a little bit confused. It's just not something we are set up to do unless it's, you know, I mean, we can amend a budget or we can, you know, pass a law, but like if the, if you're, what you're saying is that you think that the policies or laws or whatever are not being interpreted correctly or not being administered in a way that's satisfactory to you.
Not just that, it's just nobody's returning calls, nobody know about nothing. We know you do it. I'm saying, the reason I'm up here, we, because I know the mayor's here and I know the CAO is here. So they saying they don't know something, they don't hear something, they do, because I'm here to let you know now.
Okay.
So that's my main reason for being here, so you can't say you don't know.
No, but again, our, our position, and I think I'm gonna be clear, then I'm gonna move to the next speaker.
Okay.
In that, we are the legislative body of this city. We develop policy and law. It's only when policy and law is to be altered, amended, or addressed that deals with this city, do we act in a personnel matter. I'm gonna speak with the city attorney and I'm gonna speak with the mayor. Because your, your situation seem to be somewhat complicated.
It's not.
Well, maybe it's not, but I'm saying, but we'll look at it. But thank you for coming.
Okay, I'll be back.
Thank you. But let me, let me say this, I wanna be clear, since you're here. Speaking for this body is a privilege. By, by, by rule, the council members have to give you that privilege.
Okay.
So if the council members, if I call for permission to speak, and the council members vote for.
Or against.
Not to speak, then you won't be given that privilege.
That'll be even better for me, because now y'all don't even wanna hear what I gotta say. So that's fine with me.
No, no, I'm saying that.
I understand what you're saying. Exactly.
What I'm saying is that, is that we, we need an opportunity to research and see what the root of your issue. I can get that from the mayor and the administration.
Okay.
And if you just come down to be repetitious, then the council members will take that into consideration.
That'd be fine, but I'll be back. And if y'all don't wanna hear it, that'd be okay.
This is the public's house.
Okay.
You, you can come before this body at any time.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that the privilege to speak is not afforded everybody.
I understand one hundred percent what you're saying.
And that it'd be at the discretion of this, of this council to continue to allow you to speak on issues that we all have already heard and are trying to resolve.
I understand.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Um.
Respect. Respect. Got to be respected. Respect. Respectfully.
Yes. Mr. Douglas, what's the first name? Is that Mr. Douglas?
Douglas.
Is who?
Douglas.
Okay, come on, I'm sorry. What's your first name?
Caitlin.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't make out the first name.
Is your name and your address for the record?
Caitlin Douglas, six-nine-one-two Broadway Avenue.
You have three minutes.
Okay. We need to hear more. There's a scientific process, accusations I can't support, there's nothing that I can do, we're not in a position to do so, and we need to research to resolve this issue. That's six excuses that you've given the public since they've gotten up to speak. And why I say excuses is because Jeff, I believe, Mr. Everson?
Everson.
Mr.?
Everson.
Yeah. Mr. Everson, he clearly said, "We can pass a law." We can pass a law. So that means you have the authority to do something. And you are giving the public excuses or better yet, passively threatening them by saying things such as what you just told this lady, that speaking to the body is a privilege. When if it's open for the public, it shouldn't be a privilege. The public has rights, just like you have rights as you serve on this board. So I do feel like that was very disrespectful. But also, when it comes to people addressing the mayor, people looking at her and she not saying anything to them, I don't know if you are aware, but the older gentleman who got up to spoke was actually Satchel Paige's son. He is a, the son of a legend. And I actually worked at the news station, Channel Twelve, earlier this summer, and we did a story on him, what he just talked about. There was an actual news story that ran on the news. So I'm not understanding when you say that, "Oh, I didn't know about it. This is the first time I'm hearing about it." When you have the news at home that you can watch, we can get notifications from KSLA News Twelve on your phone. So I don't feel like it's very feasible to give the public excuses as to what you can't do or you weren't aware. And that's why I feel the community is speaking out so much. Everyone is not able to put their thoughts into words well enough to properly display what they're thinking about. So I feel like we, we as people, first of all, should be able to understand people, even though they might not be the best communicators. And I feel like as city council members, you're, you're hearing everyone, but you're not really listening to everyone. And it's, it's, it's getting to the point to where people are afraid to speak out. And I don't think that is very, that is very ethical to, to say things of the nature, it's a privilege to speak to us because it makes you seem kind of like a dictator. And that is not the case. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be the case. And I'm not saying you're a dictator. I'm telling you, as a member of the public, that's what, what was represented. But I do.
I object to the use of the word dictator, Mr. Chairman. That's inappropriate.
It's inappropriate?
Yes.
Can you please explain why you feel so?
No, I object. I want my objection ruled out.
It is, it is duly objected that the language is not appropriate. Only in the sense that it is based on opinion, on your, on your terminology. And, Mr. Douglas, and, and, and we respect the public, okay? We really do respect the public. This is the public's house. But we, we have to do things decent and in order. We can't, we can't circumvent order and, and, and making accusations about our feelings.
Okay, I'm not making an, I'm not making an accusation. I'm telling you, from a public standpoint, that's what it feels like. I never said you were a dictator directly. So I understand his objection if he felt like the language was not sufficient to what he feels like it should be. But what I am saying is it feels that way, as in that's what it, it is being displayed to the members of the public. I never said you're a dictator. You don't have the authority to be a dictator. I said that's what it feels like to the general public.
We, we, we try to do things that are right and in order. We serve our constituents. It's our duty, responsibility to serve our constituents. We, you come here for answers and responses on issues that are relevant to the quality of life, the quality of living for this city. We will address those. Councilperson said that we are a policymaking body. If there are issues, if there are situations that needs to be addressed through amending policy or introducing new areas of policy, we would take all that into consideration. But, but we want to do it in the proper way.
You said you would take it into consideration, but it doesn't seem like you are taking it into consideration. Because there are multiple members of the public who are coming forward to speak out about issues that they have that you can't fix and you can't address, but you choose not to address those and you choose not to do it within your authority. So that's all I wanted to say. I do apologize if it came off as disrespectful because of my verbiage, but I was just letting you know that as, as an authoritative member of this council, you have, you do have power. So when you tell people, "Well, we have to research," they're science. I, I don't, I don't understand, you know, what kind of science you have to do to, "Oh, I don't know, put a light on a street where it's dark, darkly lit and where it could be a possible wreck." As, or as this gentleman said about putting stop signs in a neighborhood, when you clearly already did it once, so it shouldn't be a problem for you to do it again.
Well, again, we have to research that. But thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm only asking this out of, and I don't, I hope I don't bring up something else, but it sounded like a number of her comments were sort of addressing the thing, the speaker immediately before, but did I, did I misunderstand? Did you have something that you kinda wanted to talk to us before that, or?
Well, what I was going to raise is that there are a lot of community concerns that are being experienced in kind of speak. Uh, on the.
but it sounded like a number of her comments were sort of addressing the thing, the speaker immediately before. But did I, did I misunderstand? Did you have something that you kind of wanted to talk to us before that or?
Well, what I was going to address is the fact that there are a lot of community concerns that are being experienced in terms of speaking on the agenda and speed and spin. I feel as, as the most, in the most fundamental way possible, because it seems like the language being used is a little bit tedious and they are, they don't understand, they're not gonna be able to understand what you're saying. And I'm telling you that, I was trying to just relay that as somebody in the public who understands where the public is coming from and who understands as a person who has served and has under rocks and worked for as how you should speak to the public. So it is very disrespectful to speak to someone in the general public who does not understand what you're saying. And that's what I was gonna address. Also, I was gonna address the fact that I, this is all my secret city council meeting, but if I was ruled, it's pretty much standard in any form of business that you do. And I don't like the fact that when it's time for the public to speak, their, their issues aren't being just addressed. They're being dismissed. They're being dismissed. And that is a problem. There is a problem. The mayor of the city and tree court is saying that she isn't aware of things and clearly, I, I actually have proof that one of the members of the public who spoke today had an entire news story on his issue. And he's saying five months after that, even though it was broadcast on TV, even though that she had access to those media outlets, even though she had access to information from all of the public, he still is unaware. So there is sometimes a community gap that needs to be reached immediately. Because the citizens, the citizens of this community are reaching out because there are problems.
But let, let me, let me-
Wait, I'm, I'm just letting you know. I'm not, I'm definitely getting on-
No, no, we, we accepting. The councilman made a statement. You addressed it. Go ahead, councilman.
I, I appreciate the answer. And I think what I wanted to, and that answers the question. I mean, I was trying to kind of understand what the, what the original intent was. And so I appreciate the answer. I do think that there is, I mean, I spend a lot of time, I'm sure the rest of the council members spend a lot of times with their own constituencies, sort of communicating a lot. I mean, you know, what goes on in government, you know, some of the guys who were recently elected or the, or Ms. Lynch as well, you know, some of the people who were recently elected to this body, even their Tyler, you know, have obviously had a time in public service before. But before they got to this body, I mean, I think it's eye-opening once you serve on, in the city, how much the city really is involved in and how much that you have to pay attention to. And sometimes it is difficult for even somebody who is a full-time participant in, in this type of, you know, somebody who's an employee of a public agency or, you know, an elected official to even keep up with everything that's going on. So certainly, it's not difficult to imagine that there are need for additional explanation to the public on all kinds of issues and, and all kinds of parts of the public. All, all members of the public don't pay attention to the same issues. You know, I was just saying that this weekend I was meeting with a group who had a lot of questions. And it was, in, in this setting, it was a kind of one-on-one group meeting at a church where people were asking questions. And it was helpful, but it was frustrating to me in a way because I knew that a lot of the questions that I was answering, the city had put out press releases, the city had, you know, put out information on it, news stories had been done on it. But we live in a day and age where some people get their news off of social media, some people get their news off the TV, some out of the newspaper, some don't pay attention to the news at all. Some people get it by word of mouth. You know, I mean, there's just so many different avenues for information that I think that things do get confused sometimes. And I just want to acknowledge that. I appreciate that. But I, but I also want to acknowledge that, I mean, I really don't think anybody up here is trying to, you know, intentionally trying to undermine that. It's just, it's a difficult process.
We either gotta bring her up to-
The mayor, will you have the authority to do more, more things than any other, than any other-
We're gonna have a point of order. She needs to come up and speak.
No, we, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna move forward. Thank you, councilman. But let, let me be clear. Let me be clear in this chamber that this body right here, this body that you're looking at, we deal with ordinances and resolutions. This period, this period of the meeting is not designated for policy. It's designated for, for your public comments and for information. And the information we get is, is usually not pre-given to us. So we ask and ascertain how we can resolve it through the administration, working together. When you make a statement about policy changing in this sector of the, of the meeting, it's, it's not, it's not the time to do that. And I'm saying, okay. Now, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm not into, the dialogue part is over with, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Mr. Mays, Pastor Mays, look here.
Pastor Mays, 10398 Moffin Road. Years of seeing the same thing played out by a different set of people, and Psalms still are the same. The public comes crying for help, but this elected body is just like any other elected body. They know that they have a fiduciary responsibility to do something for the cries of the people, but yet they ignore it and say that it's not our problem. Well, you're public servants. And a public servant is somebody that is not only hired by the public, but somebody that represents the public. So that's why the public comments are in place here. I know people, I, I just recently walked to the back and I think for Goodman, because we're trying to work together cohesively. And your police chief, that your interim police chief that you got now, has the same spirit as the one that's leaving office. Because we was asking him to come a few minutes ago outdoors just to speak on a matter that we got young people that want to talk to our elected officials and our police officers. But it's that arrogant spirit that says, "I don't have to talk to you. I'm above you. You beneath me." It just, you know, that's the kind of crap that we dealing with. We got a list of demands that we have put forward, some things that this body can do about it. There's been written requests to the mayor's office. And that's what I'm telling people. Stop voting these people in office because of skin pigmentation. Because they have a fiduciary responsibility to the public and they choose to ignore that responsibility. They've been, since I've been coming down here. But I keep coming because I know this is a governing body that can actually do something with some of these things that I gave to you all the other day. I'm forwarding on to the state legislative, some of the state legislatures that we spoke with on this morning. Say some of these issues we can put in bill form, but some of them is for your local city councilmen and your mayor who's not gonna do anything about it, you know, with all due respect. So I'm gonna keep coming as well and keep doing what I gotta do until we are finally heard as a people. I've teamed up, like you said, I teamed up with other departments now in order to get some stuff done. Because the more people you have, it seem like the more you get done. But I'm a taxpayer and citizen, so it shouldn't take that. But since it takes that, whatever it's gonna take to get the agenda across, you know, I gotta do what I gotta do. Because I respect each and every one of you up there. But it's sad that people who comes to the council get voted in and then they change. The mayor, beautiful person when she was over the school board, but it's something that's happening. People are coming down here and they are voting, they are voting for these guys and putting guys and women's into office. And once they get into office, you says, "I gotta follow the, the protocol that's been put before me. And if I go outside of that protocol, I'm gonna be stigmatized by the whole rest of the people that I work with." It is sad. Goodman, I thank you because he did say, "Hey, you know, what you, what we're doing, we need to do it." But the, the new one, we ain't got time, you know, we ain't got time for that, you know? So he put up a defense already. So that lets me know that I can approach you. And it shouldn't be like that, you know? And, and that's the sad reality of it all to me. And, 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 you know, I, I don't need any extra time. I thank you for the time that you give me, give me. I appreciate that very much. But I've been coming for a while. You know that. I put stuff into, on paper so that it was orally as well as verbally so that it can be implemented into public policy, but yet that hadn't been done. And so we, we understand it, you know?
You need to work with your council members and, and bring it to the council members.
That's been done already.
Well, but my point is, Reverend, that you still, they still have to-
Go through the process.
Support what you're saying.
Right.
But you, you know, we, we just don't arbitrarily just say, "Okay, just because a citizen bring us something that is, is, is in the interest of the whole city." We, 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 we deal with policy for the whole city.
Right. So police brutality is a policy that's of the whole city. Police misconduct is a policy that should be put forth for the whole city. People being killed unarmed is a policy that should be put forth for the whole city. That's all I'm saying, my friend.
We can't use other examples at this time. We can be proactive and we are-
We want you to be reactive.
I'm sorry?
We, we want you to be reactive. We want you to start moving on some of the stuff that we have asked to be, I mean, Jeff, Jeff will tell you, everything I'm talking about here, we have already presented it to the necessary council members. But what happened is that nothing moves forward. And that's fine with me. But we're not gonna stop until we get something.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I mean, thank you, my friend. It's no, no disrespect. It's just, it's just two people. But when you're reaching out to the police department, and here I'm a pastor, and somebody told me he's an alleged pastor, but you're reaching out to his uniform, he's in uniform now, and, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we, we can't, we can't have dialogue.
I'm gonna end like this. You, you at, you at your church on a Sunday morning, somebody come in and say, "I want to speak with the pastor." Do they, do they have-
My administrator, whoever, my secretary and the people that works there, they're gonna say, "Hold on one minute. We're gonna go back there and we're gonna, we're gonna get the pastor for you."
My point is that the chief of the police was here to engage in the council meeting.
I understand that.
His time may not have been-
But he still is an elected official, appointed by, he's appointed by-
But I'm saying that his, his time to engage you at this time may not have been convenient for him.
But that's, that's, that's okay.
But that's fine. Okay, I'm just-
Me and you have talked and you, you didn't do the same thing.
But I don't want people to come in here assuming things that are not necessarily the case.
Right, right, right. I just assume what I see, not what I hear. I assume what I see. But anyway, thank you, thank you very much for the time. He's appointed by the mayor. And the mayor can do something about what's going on. She can do something about the chief. These are the people that are elected into office. So that's the bottom line. So it's a misnomer to deal with people.
This council, this chair and this council, respectively, not to try to be disrespectful because I was where you are and others was where you are. But again, we deal with, I know it, but I'm saying we, I have to deal with things in an orderly way and stay within the confines of our charter.
Let's do something, if you would, my friend. Let's do something about the senseless killing, police brutality, police misconduct. Let's start doing something to address these issues. Because nobody, and I know you believe this because you're Christian, nobody is infallible but God. These people think that they are infallible. There's only one that's infallible. The police department can be wrong, my friend. They can make mistakes. They can do things that are not ethical. They are not infallible. You are Christian and I'm a Christian. There's one that's infallible and his name is Jesus.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
This is the public house. And we will give every citizen the right to come before this house. But we must be respectful and in order and decent in how we present and how we respond. There's a time that we deal with legislative items and there's a time that we hear public commentary. And we'll govern ourselves accordingly. Are there any other business need to come before this body? Let me remind the council members that we are going to executive meeting immediately following the adjournment. No other business, the meeting is adjourned.